Welcome. I would like to call the September 16, 2025 City Council, which can be found on the city's website at www.DiamondBarCA. It will be submitted to advance to the city clerk. If any were received. Big comments period. The meeting is being recorded and by participating, you are giving your permission to be televised at www.DiamondBarCA.gov. Role call and please stand for the pledge of allegiance. For the invocation by Pastor Moses Silver, Calvary.
There could be a sense of fear. We know that the Lord tells us in the New Testament to. The city council, the leaders, the kings and the rulers who are over us and for the peace of the city that we live in and all the council and all the decisions are going to be made for the city. We ask, Lord God, that you would dwell, Lord God, in this place, giving counsel, Lord God, to the mayor of Ornia all the way across from east to west, the United States of America. We ask that you bring.
City Clerk Santana, can you please call the role?
Yes, Mayor Tang.
Item is approval of the agenda. City attorneys, are there any reportable action from the closed session?
There is no reportable action there. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Fox, Taekwondo Day proclamation. And Taekwondo Grandmaster Ru, please come to. Are they showing something?
Well, we're invited.
The performance by the Taekwondo team first. All right. All right. Well, let's get to the center. You're not done yet? Okay. No. Wow, good. That's. Taekwondo is, you know, is a practice, discipline martial arts. I think it's very well proclaimed that Taekwondo Day today from Diamond Bar City. And I'm glad that you are be here.
Bar to make this amazing event for Taekwondo community. So through Taekwondo, we all around the world people take this day for the city of Diamond Bar. So honestly, so many national champions and world champions actually want to be the future leaders of this community. I hundred percent sure. So thank you so much for this event. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir.
You did today and what you do in the community. And in terms of martial arts, I didn't have to discipline. But how we develop our youth in terms of character, strength and confidence and their uplift and really support each other.
Gates in recognition of the Diamond Bar Evergreen Club 35 anniversary. So Diamond, 35 years, 35 anniversary. Everybody, where's the rest of the certificate? Okay, we're all here. Standing next to me, and as far as I know, he is in the. I better keep it secret, but I just admire him. I admire his, the club has excellent activities. Just two weeks ago, I was there. I see the dancing. So we are very glad to have this club in our Diamond Bar City. So thank you, Mr. Shi, for, for Mr. Shi, for his, for his job. So this is very special, city plan. Okay, Mr. Shi, we want to say something?
Yeah, first I want to introduce our club member today. Can you wave your hand teacher appreciation?
Okay, oh, then, uh, I'll say, yeah, Zeng Yi, Si Yuan. Well,谢谢,谢谢, thank you.
然后what Mr. Shi says. This honor is really a great honor for us. It kind of represent our kind of. Yeah, we kind of started in 1990 and this is the 35th year. If you count it, if you all the senior, senior person in our community and also a little bit surrounding city for all the people to come here, 100 people. In addition to this 20 classes and we have four quarterly event according to the variable dance. Yeah, we want to appreciate the city for offering us this great opportunity to use continuously and then also serving the community.
Now I'm going to present this a very special plaque to Mr. Shi and later on, according to a board member, Tony Tong, this is also their. Last time that when I was there attending the activity, I saw a. Next slide, if they have a performance, I invite everybody to go there. Recommendation. Project update. I would like to invite the Renee Cornell 760 Confluence project. Go ahead.
Cornell, I'm the project manager on the 5760 on behalf of the Sangue Valley Council of Governments. And I have a. As we go into the, you have eight lanes coming in. The Confluence area is seven lanes. And as you get out, it's one side of the street. So what we have to do is that side of the street is going to be lower than the other side. So it's, it's Grand Avenue. You've noticed we've opened the new on-ramp and I'll go into further details about the alignment and what we're going to. And that's basically a bypass. If you're on Grand Avenue and you want to get on, on Grand Avenue, you want to get on a freeway and last lanes towards the south. As a reminder, this project is number 23 on the 28 by 28. Had a pleasure working with Hal, Christian and David. It involves Metro, Caltrans, City of Industry, and we're leading the. Explain the project team, you see a lot of white trucks out there with the flashing lights. WSP is a construction manager. They're our consultant who is measuring every cubic yard of. SP1 as well, as well as federal funds, infra total of $414 million. Some statistics we've so far of construction in the two years we've been here. That picture in the back, they're driving some of the piles for the foundations that you've seen some from far on Golden Springs Drive. As I said, the bridge has basically widening the 57. It was a straightforward bridge. We widened it. We finished all the superstructure. It's. Bottom, which is the Golden Springs Drive as well as at the top, because we're going to start putting traffic on that new bridge pretty soon. What's going on with the bridge? Down at the new Grand Avenue bypass have been constructed. That rebar that's sticking out, those are the columns that support the bridge. Three of those columns are in. Once we shift traffic closer to those retaining walls, we're going to be able to do the other half of that bridge. Grand Avenue, here's where. We're going to do a lot of changes coming up. As you can see in this, in this schematic, the new off-ramp. People on the new on-ramp, that new loop ramp that's starting to take shape. We're going to be able to put motorists on that after this weekend. Once we can do that, we're going to close the existing on-ramp, which is just north of that to the. That allows us to start demoing part of the existing Grand Avenue Bridge. So I know I've been saying that the demos coming, the demos. Bridge we're demoing, it's not a lot the first phase. That partial demolition allows us to build the first half of the new bridge. Motorist will be using the new on-ramp, which is just to the north of that, that new loop ramp. Today, we've been doing a lot of the. Once the new bridge is complete, we're going to realign that new on-ramp. Complete, you're going to be able to get the, you're going to be able to get on the 60 from both the north and the south. Just for now, we have to. As you can see here, that's existing Grand Avenue Bridge. Shift traffic towards the left, we're going to move traffic, keep the same four lanes on the left side. The other half of the bridge is going to be used as a construction zone. We're going to use that to build a new bridge as well as to demo the existing part of the bridge, which is that, just that. That's the only part we're demoing in two weeks. That demolition of that part of the bridge allows us to build the first half of the new bridge. What the bypass, as I explained earlier, motorists are going to be able to catch this, this side, this new bridge. If you're coming off a grand or if you're on the later lanes towards the south. Columns have been erected in the next coming months. Once the columns reach the strength, you're going to see. Going up, that's going to be the false work. That's going to allow us to build the deck of the bridge. The way you do it is you put the casing, the rebars up, and then you, you pour the concrete. We do a lot of tests to make sure there's no anomalies. It's a huge structure that lets us know if there's a void, if it's solid. There's a lot of testing that goes on with these structures. So so far, everything's come out to the quality. We have inspectors there. We have Caltrans there, a city there. A lot of eyes on every structure that's out there. For community outreach, we continue to engage the community. We continue to encourage folks to subscribe to our newsletter. Every time we have a closure, we do put a notice and we do go door to door knocking. Ricky, who's here with Government Relations, he's updated. We talk every week on this project at the office. So here's some of our notices. So when we open the new on-ramp, this was one of our new notices. And for upcoming closures, we'll, we'll put the times. We're trying to make it as easy as possible, but it's, there's a lot of on-ramps, there's a lot of off-ramps and, and the closest off and on ramps are miles away. So we're trying to keep things consistent and simple as possible. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any question from the council? Andrew, Councilmember Andrew Cho? No. Councilmember Lo? Councilmember Liu?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Hey Renee. Thank you so much. And since the last time I, we noticed the communication has gotten much better, a lot more frequent and abundant. Thank you. Thank you so much. And just big picture thing. So we experienced closures and traffics in the past year. With the new construction that's coming up in the upcoming year compared to last year, are we looking at about the same amount of congestion that we may face? Or a little bit less or more?
It, it'll be about the same. I expect the first couple of weeks, people getting adjusted to it. There'll be a little bit more traffic, but as people get used to it, like we've noticed with the new on-ramp, people will know when to get off. I tried driving it on the weekends when I'm passing here and forth. And yeah, it does come quick. So any improvements that Caltrans gives us or the public, we look into it. But for now, I expect the same amount of traffic. When you shift things, it gets a little worse, but over time it gets better.
Cool. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Me put in?
No.
No, okay. I have no more questions. So thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for helping us with this project.
Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any additional reports?
Our assistant city manager, Brian McLean, will provide a law enforcement update.
Thank you, Mayor Tang and members of the city council. I'm pleased to provide an update from a recent meeting with the Public Safety Committee that took place on September 3rd. I also want to follow up a little bit about the presentation that was given to the city council and included myself and members of the sheriff's leadership team back in March. We acknowledged some challenges we were facing when it came to property crimes, particularly burglaries. And so we felt it was appropriate to not only update the Public Safety Committee, but also the city council and community in a public session. And so I'll start by reminding everyone, when we look at the big picture, even when we have some challenges related to property crimes, Diamond Bar remains a very safe community. We have a very, very low amount of violent crime. And when you look in detail into those violent crime incidents, most of those are not random acts of violence. They are domestic in nature. I say that not to diminish the impact of those incidents, but to remind everyone that you're very unlikely to be the victim of a violent crime in a random case here in Diamond Bar. And that's a good thing. We remain challenged by property crime, although I do have some good news that I will share as we go forward. I will say that property crime has historically been the number one issue in Diamond Bar. If you'll recall, usually 90 plus percent of the part one crime incidents that we have on an annual basis are property crimes. The suppression work, this has been a very impactful thing. Captain Towsey and Lieutenant Dale have really done a great job along with their teams in finding some strategies that have proven to be successful. And we'll get into that in a little bit. The Sheriff's Department Major Crimes Unit has also been involved in some long-term cases that have resulted in some pretty significant arrests. One in particular, back in the spring, captured, I believe, three suspects that were wanted for a series of burglaries across Southern California, including several here in Diamond Bar. And so that work that the captain lieutenant and the sheriff's department major crimes unit has completed has really made a difference. And so this slide here will show some of the impact since the time that we last addressed the council and the community back in March. We have statistics available on a monthly basis from April to August. You'll see on the screen, we have a lot of negative numbers when you look at percentage change. We have a lot of negative numbers when we look at the number of incidents in each of those categories. The most important thing to look at, we were challenged by residential burglaries. We've seen a greater than 20% drop since we last spoke to the city council. Overall, part one crime is down 10%. Property crime down about 15. Total burglary is down over 23%. So the numbers are good. The trends are in the right direction and we're making progress. This does not mean that we've solved every issue. It doesn't mean that we won't have more challenges in the future, but we are moving in the right direction, which is what we wanted to do when we came forward back in March. I'm sharing overall year-to-date trends. This shows the statistics here from the beginning of the year, January through August. I will note that the August data is preliminary. As I've mentioned before, we run usually about a month behind on finalizing the statistics. We need to make sure that everything is accurate, but these are pretty close to final. We'll update if there are any changes once we get those final numbers here towards the end of September. The main thing to consider when we look at here is back when we addressed the city council in March, part one crime was up 2.3%. Burglary was up over 40%. Residential burglary was up about 35%. You can see when you look at the impact of the crime suppression strategies that our team has put together, you can see that we've turned around a lot of those numbers. We've made up a huge amount when you compare where we were at the start of the year to where we are now. Part one crime currently through August is down a little over 5%. You'll see a very large number there on the, on the violent crime section. An 81% change. As I mentioned before, we have very few incidents of violent crime in Diamond Bar. And in fact, we are coming off the lowest violent crime total that the city has ever experienced. Last year, we had the fewest amount in the city's history, 38 incidents. So we are, we see a change when you look at the same period, January to August. We've had 18 more incidents that leads to that significant number. I will say that we are on pace for another top five finish when it comes to violent crime in the city's history. And so while that number is alarming and worth working on improving, we are in a pretty good space overall when you look at the city's history. Moving on to property crime, you can see here, this is again where we see the most incidents. We've had a reduction of 52 property crimes in the period when comparing to last year, a difference of about 8%. Total burglary is even to where we were last year. But we're at that point because of the vast reduction that we've seen in the last five months in particular. Overall, residential burglary is down a little over 2%. Other burglaries, which are primarily commercial burglaries, are up 3%, a difference of three total incidents in eight months. And then finally, larceny theft. We've seen a reduction of 44 incidents year-to-date, a difference of about 12%. So while this is good news, it doesn't mean that the work stops. It doesn't mean that our team is not continuing to look for ways to have these trends continue into the new year. I will note that a lot of the burglaries that we see in the Southland area are being conducted by organized crews. And so Major Crimes is working cases as we speak with some of the crews that were not ultimately arrested earlier this year. And those crews have impacted Diamond Bar in the period since we last spoke to the council and community. And so Major Crimes is working those. We hope that they'll come through with some significant arrests that will continue the trends that we see here. The city council also in this budget and probably a decade back continues to include additional funding in the annual budget so that the station leadership has the flexibility to request extra. so that the station leadership has the flexibility to request extra funding to do suppression patrols, to target any trend that we have. We've used that money in the past primarily to address burglary issues. But any other crime trend that we see, we can put that extra funding towards and get extra boots on the ground and additional overtime that will assist us in suppressing any crime activity. We tend to also target periods in which there are higher incidents of property crime, particularly during the holiday season. We see in December, January, historically, a trend when we look at the analysis. And so we have worked with station leadership to ensure that that money targets times where we expect there to be a spike in activity. And then finally, the station and the city are going to be collaborating on some new initiatives to address thefts from vehicles. We've seen that there, in one particular section of town, there seems to be a greater concentration of thefts from vehicles. And so the captain has come forward with some ideas to address those, and we're going to work collaboratively with him and his team to address that. As always, we like to remind the council and members of the community that it's important that we work together. This is a joint effort to reduce crime. This one goes without saying, but we encourage residents, business owners, anyone who's coming through the community, to immediately report suspicious activity to the station. It's much better to call and have it end up being nothing than it is to post something online, or call your friend, or what have you, and have it actually end up being a crime. Please call the station, and they will come out and check it out. We'd also like to remind everyone to avoid crimes of opportunity. In a community that has more than 90% of its crime incidents related to property crimes, it's really important that everyone secure your property. Make sure that you harden your home, invest in security measures, lock your vehicles, and leave things at home if you can. And if something is in your car, make sure it's out of sight and that your vehicle is locked. Use the resources that are available. The station volunteers have a great program, the Vacation Check Program. If you're going to be out of town and your neighbors can't help you monitor your property or check in on your property to ensure everything's still solid, call the station, and volunteers will go by when you're out of town to ensure that your house remains safe. Whenever possible, avoid traveling with large sums of money or other valuable items. Again, that just increases the opportunity for a crime to be committed. So if you're, you know, leaving the bank with a bag of money, take precaution. Don't leave that in your car. Don't leave it on the seat where it's visible. Very simple things can go a long way to help us reduce the crime incidents that we have here in town. We also have taken steps to offer more opportunities for residents to learn from our deputies, learn crime prevention measures, get to know your neighbors. We'd encourage you to attend a Neighborhood Watch, a Business Watch, the Coffee with the Cop program. And next week, we have a Meet Your Public Safety Providers event at City Hall in the Windmill Room on Wednesday evening. We'd encourage you to attend that. You get to know some of the deputies that work in your community, as well as the staff and representatives from the Fire Department, Animal Control, and the city. If you have an interest in serving your community and being part of the difference, you can also join the Volunteers on Patrol. If you have some time and you want to be part of the solution, please call the station, and they'll get you in touch with the, I believe it's the sergeant that's in charge of that program. And you can join some of your community members and neighbors in patrolling Diamond Bar as a volunteer. And then finally, get to know your neighbors. It's important that you know your neighbors in the area. They can keep an eye out for you, and you can keep an eye out for them and work together. Building those coalitions is important. The Neighborhood Watch program can go a long way in doing so. And so it takes the entire community to work together, and we'd encourage you to get to know your neighbors and help one another when it comes to reporting suspicious activity or looking out for one another's property. And with that, that concludes my update. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to start with Councilmember Cho.
Sure. Thank you for the report, and thank Captain Towsey and your team for the work that you do. Quick question specifically on flock cameras. Do we have any sense of how effective they are? And do we have any examples how they've been helpful?
I know that the Sheriff's Department has used the flock cameras on numerous occasions in investigations. They've been particularly helpful when they're supplemented by additional footage that's captured on home security cameras. And so what seems to be really helpful to the Sheriff's Department is if somebody sees a suspicious vehicle, let's say, a white truck passing through the neighborhood, they can pass that along to the Sheriff's Department. They can then query the cameras and look for white trucks that were in the area. And without giving away specifics offhand, I know that it's been a very successful investigatory tool for the Sheriff's Department. It's been key in solving a number of concerns that they've been alerted to.
One more question. So I had a chance to attend a Neighborhood Watch meeting on the north, and I think they're on the Cora Road. One of the things that came up is there are some known transients in the area who frequent certain spots kind of repeatedly. What are, what are we doing with those folks? I know we were continuing to outreach and offer assistance, but specify what, anything additional that we're doing in the area?
When it comes to any type of transient or homeless activity, we have a process that we follow. If we receive notification of homeless individual, we'll go out there and we'll verify the conditions. We'll work with our partners at La Cada, which is staffed by those that are trained in social work, essentially. They'll go out and work with those individuals, try to build relationships with the ultimate goal of getting them housing, permanent housing. We will also, if necessary, alert our sheriff's team. Our special assignment team in particular has been a real effective tool when it comes to addressing some of those issues, because they practice community policing strategies. And so they go out and get to know some of our regular homeless individuals. I will say that we cannot arrest someone for being homeless. Our deputies have to witness criminal activity. There has to be a crime committed if, for an arrest to take place. We work very closely, not only with La Cada, the social work team, to get housing in place, but with our public safety partners, so that if there is criminal activity taking place, whether it's trespassing or anything else, they will address it if there is criminal activity. If there is not criminal activity, we'll continue to work with La Cada to try to get housing in place and assistance for those individuals.
Let's go to Councilmember Lo.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Thank you, Ryan, for your presentation. My question regards one of the slides that you flashed. It was the comparing 24 to 25 and the percentages and the raw numbers. Can you, right. So my question is, in 2024, are those the numbers for 12 months? Or is that the number for eight months?
This is year-to-date through August.
For both, for both years?
For both, yes.
Okay, so, so the, so it's as of August 24 versus August 25?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was my question. Thank you. That's it.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Mayor Porten, tie?
Ryan, how are we doing with making progress with businesses?
In what regard?
In helping them help themselves. And with everything that we do for homes and, you know, what? I'm trying to think off the top of my head, what, where we do suppressions in given areas. How are, how are we, if, what are we doing, if anything, to help businesses? I mean, I had a, for a couple of years, office at, I think it's called The Point. And truly, none of them know what to do. And before I got that business, they had, they had been, I don't know, if it was two or three businesses that were broken into. How are we helping them be better at protecting themselves? Because truly, you see, you see the smaller businesses put on a chair, put the cash register right out there, and it's empty, that there's nothing here, please don't break it. But they break it anyhow. Are we making any progress there?
Well, overall, we've seen that we're about the same level of commercial and other burglaries as last year, that we have a three-incident difference at this point. In the past 12 to 18 months, we've conducted a number of Business Watch events. We've done pop-ups in commercial centers. Deputies and members of the Volunteers on Patrol have gone door-to-door in those shopping areas, providing resources, offering assessments, security assessments to those that are interested. We have lots of information on our website related to this, and we continue to put that out there at the events that we conduct related to public safety. I will say, it's often difficult to get participation. We've done this on a number of occasions. I've witnessed it myself and done the walks door-to-door with the volunteers. We have a lot of small business owners, and they have limited time and resources and people available to participate. And that's why we did the door-to-door, you know, strategy to reach them. But we would be available, and our special assignment team deputies, I think, would gladly provide any type of security assessments that a business owner would be interested in receiving. We even put the assessment kind of checklist together on a sheet and handed that out when we were doing the door-to-door walks. And so we've tried to make engagement part of the process, to provide the information that they need to better protect themselves. And those are a few of the strategies that we've used over the past, again, 12 to 18 months.
Thank you. When you report that, when there's something happening, we may need to go to the neighbors for their surveillance footage for the help. And are they usually willing to provide this information to the law enforcement? Or do we have any difficulty in getting those footage?
I have not heard of anything specific. And if I did, it would largely be anecdotal anyway. I think that's why it's so important that we get to know our neighbors and build those relationships and trust, so that if there is an incident, where you can provide that information to one another and share it with the Sheriff's Department investigators if there is an incident. I have not heard anything in which there has been, you know, significant resistance to providing that information if it is available. But I would defer to the captain or his team. Or it hasn't happened that he's aware of, sorry, my microphone cut.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, you mentioned the La Cada. I think La Cada is mainly for people with alcohol and drug abuse problem, right? If the homeless people, they don't have this problem, if they have mental problem, and does La Cada also offer help to them?
They do. They do have training in drug and alcohol treatment and mental health assistance. Their goal is, again, to build relationships with the individuals to make it more likely that they will accept some assistance, whether that's housing, whether it's medical treatment. They do provide more training and boots on the ground. The Cada program is funded through the Measure H that was passed by the voters countywide, and it runs through the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, of which the city is a member. And so we have teams in town, usually about two days a week.
So they are just here on the regular time, that if we contact them, they won't come immediately?
No, that resource is, again, in town about two days a week on a regular schedule. We do contact them. We have the ability to let them know, hey, we have an individual that needs assistance. This is their general location where they usually are. And we've worked with them on many occasions, many different incidents involving local homeless people. And they'll come out the next day that they're available to help us out.
Have we ever had any success in placing some of the people in our city?
We have on a number of occasions, most recently about two weeks ago.
Thank you. So any other questions? No? Thank you for your presentation. Next item is public comments. Public comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the City Council on concerned calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the City Council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the City Council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary. But no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the City Council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first. Then City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. I have received a speaker card from Sinta Yu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Porten, councilmembers, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Sinta Yu from the Member Library. The annual bookmark contest is here again from September 2nd to October 18th. Young artists ingress K-212, consume an original bookmark design inspired by reading, books, libraries, or their own imagination. The grand prize-winning designs will be selected by the County Board of Supervisors and will be made into bookmarks and distributed across all LA County library locations. We'll celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th with three special programs. On Saturday, September 20th at 2:00 p.m., we'll join flamenco dancer Susanna Elena on a magic trip to Spain, where children will learn how to move their arms and hands like flamenco dancers and perform a simple and fun flamenco dance using scarves. This program is sponsored by the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. Teens will make a llama backpack charm and learn the cultural significance of llama in Peru and other South American countries on Monday, September 29th at 4:00 p.m. We'll have a family craft party featuring Mexican Ojalata art. Families and children will learn about the ancient techniques of the art and the history of Ojalata, while we create beautiful, unique work of art together. Please visit our website, laacountylibrary.org, for more information about our programs and services. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker card came from Elaine Emanuel.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Elaine Emanuel. This is my 30th year living in Diamond Bar. And up until recent months, I've always felt very proud and relatively safe in my community. Unfortunately, it seems multiple times per week, I'm hearing about our learning of bizarre and dangerous situations involving the vagrant population, some of which we've been discussing a little bit earlier. And they've been allowed to apparently settle here in Diamond Bar, particularly on the north side. And some of this information was relayed to Councilman Cho at that meeting that we attended on Saturday. Particularly, we have a group that has created an encampment behind the baseball fields on the west end of Sunset Crossing Road. Individuals from this group, and then some, often loiter around the mobile gas station on the corner of Sunset Crossing and Diamond Bar Boulevard, as well as the nearby freeway off-ramps. Their harassment and intimidation of customers, customers which typically are residents, the employees, business owners, are adversely affected by, well, their actions adversely affect these local businesses. Some of the businesses that I have spoken to initially felt that they wanted to speak up, but after some thought, they've decided they would rather not relate. up, but after some thought, they've decided they would rather not relay the info or speak out for fear of being targeted any further. Some of the incidents are as follows. Mentally unstable man wielding a chainsaw on Diamond Bar Boulevard at all hours of the day. Aggressive male bikers riding on the sidewalk with no regard for pedestrians for whom the sidewalks are intended. Harassing and intimidating customers, also residents, in parking lots at numerous local businesses. Man entering 7-Eleven with large knife intended to intimidate while he collected items and then proceeded to walk out without paying. I was told police were called and advised, but I guess the sound didn't, the call didn't sound urgent enough, so there was initially no response until the theft actually took place. Fire that was recently set on the hillside by the homes near the 60 freeway off-ramp, which was reported to have been caused by the homeless individuals that are residing there. And just today, there was a fire in the park and ride near Diamond Bar High School. Somebody mentioned that there was also a homeless encampment there as well. We don't, I don't know if the two were related, but somebody mentioned that. These are just some of the incidents that I'm recently aware of, but I'm sure other residents could also add to this list. The individuals responsible for these incidents, more often than not, go unchallenged and continue their aggressions without negative consequences or repercussions from authorities, who are often informed and knowledgeable about these individuals. Nevertheless, it appears nothing is done to stop their behaviors, which is disturbing and causes a lack of confidence in our safety. Those of us that have growing concerns about the escalation of these activities and aggressions would like to know what actions will be taken. I implore our city council to make the safety of residents and businesses of Diamond Bar a top priority. I pray that it won't take a tragic act of violence for authorities to act in mitigating the sources of these problems and incidents that have increased in recent months. I, for myself and my family, we no longer feel comfortable in walking the areas in many parts of North Diamond Bar. Maybe specifically in our neighborhood, we're okay because we're comfortable with our neighbors, but anything extended beyond that, it's very uncomfortable. Visiting some of the shopping centers, the CVS, Sprouts, Smart &amp; Final, all those shopping centers, I think twice before going to those areas, and especially when I see the elements that are around. Many times, I'll just wait, and when I go visit my daughter in Chino, I'll go shopping there, or I'll go in Walnut where there seems to be a far less element, similar element there in that city. Anyway, once again, I thank you for your time, and I really hope that something can be done about this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card comes from Jeanette Arias.
Good evening, and thank you for your time as well. I'm also a North Diamond Bar resident and business owner, and I run a business out of an office near the mobile gas station on that north side. And ultimately, Elaine covered a lot, Andrew covered some, and I did hear the other comments about what's happening to help, but I'm stepping up as a voice for those that are too scared to come and say this themselves. There are a lot of transient activities that happen every single day that don't get called into the police, and I know that I'm probably on their caller ID as a regular caller because I do. And I spoke today to several business owners in our shopping center and asked them if they have any issues with the people that hang out outside. They say they do, some have video footage, some, many had stories, but none of them want to step up for fear of retaliation from those people that hang out there because even me, when I pull up, I make sure that I look both ways before I get out of my car because they seem to hang out between the mobile and the buildings. They defecate, they leave trash behind, we're having rodent problems there, and it's unfortunate because we all have clients and customers that come into those businesses. There's a barber shop, a liquor store, an insurance company, and our customers don't feel comfortable coming in, and that just means that we're going to lose business and the city of Diamond Bar is going to lose business if we're losing customers and they don't feel safe coming to our places of business. The same transients are also floating around into our neighborhood. I am an avid walker in our neighborhood, and I'm starting to see them float around, snoop around houses. We have our own, you know, like neighborhood watch, and I see people posting that they're catching people on their cameras. We are reporting these things. Some neighbors have mentioned to me that, the sheriffs mentioned that if somebody's snooping around your fence, it's okay because Amazon or FedEx throws packages over and they have to verify that they go there, and unless you have some kind of sign that says no trespassing, it's okay for that to happen. And that definitely doesn't make me feel safe. And I'm making sure that when we have our neighborhood watch meetings, we're all aware that we should be putting up more cameras and having more no trespassing signs on our own properties, which aren't the most beautiful, but if we have to do that, then that's what we have to do. And it would be nice also to know if the city has any assistance programs, because we do have a lot of elderly in our neighborhood who cannot afford a Ring Doorbell or don't have any kind of security system. So if the city has any options or discounts somewhere that we can present that to our neighbors, that would be great, because in my neighborhood, I would say that you either just moved in there five years ago, or you've been there 25 years plus, and you're on a fixed income through social security or something like that. I think that's everything that I wanted to cover, but I just wanted to piggyback off of those that already spoke and share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card comes from the Gary Spie family, Unit B.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and council members. My parents are current 14-year residents of Diamond Bar. They are renting a condo in the Allegro Development of Montefino Avenue and Diamond Bar Boulevard. My siblings and I have been attempting to advocate for their health and safety in addition to their renters' rights with their property manager, but those pleadings have fallen on deaf ears. The property manager opened up holes in the acoustic popcorn ceiling without prior asbestos testing on May 9th, 2025. Demolition work began, but fortunately, a South Coast AQMD inspector interceded to stop the construction work. All the while, our parents have lived with the asbestos exposure for 130 days. They have lost their ability to use their living room as the South Coast AQMD, the auditorium and offices that we are sitting in tonight, cordoned off the living room and part of the dining room with yellow caution tape. Asbestos fibers, debris, and dust have migrated to the entire first floor, including the staircase, which was confirmed by an independent company who tested and compiled a report of the unit. Since the South Coast AQMD lacks the jurisdiction to enforce any sort of compliance timeline, the property manager, Adam Brett Freilich, has had no requirements to complete the repairs with a certified, licensed, and reputable company. Furthermore, owners Mark Zane Freilich and Sharon Beth Freilich have failed to comply to all issued notices as well as the procedures and law regarding Rule 1403. We have reached out to the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and they are unwilling to get involved with asbestos issues, kicking the problem back to the South Coast Air Quality AQMD. We were advised to appeal to the city to get involved and advocate for us with city staff, building and safety or code enforcement, to come out and inspect the unit and work together with the South Coast AQMD to establish an enforceable notice to comply from the city with the completion time limit. The South Coast AQMD is ready and willing to work with the various city departments, but their specific policy is to not reach out to other agencies first. We can provide contact information to the inspector and his supervisor to coordinate action if the city council is open to assisting us in this matter. Our family loves the city of Diamond Bar. We care about the neighborhood as our extended family. So this matter not only affects just our family, but the community of Diamond Bar at large. I thank you for listening to our plea.
Thank you. City Clerk Santana, are there any public comments, emails, receive? This is all the public comment I have now on my table, and there is any other public comments coming from the emails or any callers on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was one email received from Mr. Emady Garisbee, submitted for public comment tonight. It was forwarded to the city council and placed at the entrance to the meeting for public viewing. At this time, if any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in the GoToWebinar program. And there are no raised hands, Mayor.
Captain Towsey, are you going to present something?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm trying to write some quick notes. I didn't write it down as the, as those speakers were talking. I just want to take a few minutes to address the last two speakers that spoke on homeless. First of all, I just want to say that the homeless issue unfortunately has been dropped at the feet of law enforcement, but it's actually an issue much larger than law enforcement. It's a societal issue, and it takes a lot of people working together to solve this issue. When it comes to homeless and law enforcement, our power comes from laws that are being violated, so there have to be laws that are being violated. One of the speakers spoke about a male who carries a chainsaw around the city. That individual is very well-known to us. We've been dealing with him for several years. In fact, our mental evaluation team that we have for the sheriff's department took it upon themselves to put him into an involuntary hold program where he was put, first of all, he was arrested for the, for when he did commit crimes, he was arrested and put in jail. When he came out, he was still having problems, and we were able to put him on an involuntary hold and keep him in custody for over a year before he's come out. He, we do get calls on him, but since he's finished that program, he has not been seen committing any crimes. So our, our special assignment teams continue building a rapport with him. We're in constant contact with him. When, when we do get calls on him, we respond out there. He's, he's very polite and receptive to us, but he has, he's not committing crimes that we've seen, and if he did, we would arrest him. There was another issue of a person walking into the store with a knife. A knife in a visible sheath on your side is legal. There's nothing illegal about carrying a knife. It's visible. It's, like anything, it's when you cover it up that it becomes a crime. So although it's scary, it's within the law to carry a knife on your side in a visible sheath. I don't, I did not, I ran calls for service. I know Ryan asked for a report of homeless incidents that we had throughout the year, and I read through all of them. I don't remember seeing that one, but just in my experience, if someone is carrying a knife in a sheath visible, there's no crime committed. As far as the defecating, we can take action when it comes to that, however, I did not see any calls. No one ever called in and reported seeing that. Another issue I'd like to address is a lot of the crimes that these homeless people, if they do commit crimes, it's mostly going to be of a misdemeanor, a misdemeanor nature. And when you have a misdemeanor crime that's not committed in our presence, the person who saw the crime would have to be the one that would, to put them under citizen's arrest. And in those cases, that person is obligating themselves to go to court and testify against that person, and that's kind of where we have the problem, is they call, they want something done. We advise them that you have to place them under private persons arrest and then go to court on this case, and they usually aren't that committed to doing it, which is not, is not their fault. It is quite a burden to have to go to court. So we wind up not having the power to make the arrest. So we try to give them stern warnings not to continue the activity. And then, as, as Ryan said in his presentation, a lot of, a lot of dealing, a lot of our solutions is by building rapport, not by harassing them. So we want to try to keep that rapport, so when something happens, we already have that relationship built with them. Encampments, I know encampments were mentioned, so we do have a team. Not only can, not only do we actively go after encampments, but we have a team specifically for any encampment of five, five encampments together is, or five people living together is considered an encampment. They would involve the, our homeless outreach team. So they would, they would come out, they would post signs. It's a big, long process. If it gets that big, if it gets to five homeless people living together, it becomes quite a scene where we have to post signs and give them two weeks' notice. So we try to, we try to get to those encampments as soon as we hear about them, when they're still small, because we can just, we can deal with them on a one-by-one basis, which is what we try to do. I know we get calls of encampments in those fields. We send the special assignment deputies there. I know, I know Ryan and the city staff also go through those fields, and we don't see the encampments. We don't see people living in those, in those pony fields. If they're sleeping there, maybe we're missing them, but they're not, they're not encamped in there that we've seen. Trying to think what else. You know, loitering, loitering outside of the, of the, of the place, of the businesses around there can be a crime, but once again, it's going to be a misdemeanor. So it's going to be incumbent upon that business owner to place them under, under private persons arrest. If they're inside the 7-Eleven and they're buying something, or they're inside the mobile store buying something, that's not loitering, unfortunately. They're a customer that's, that's staying in the parking lot, and it's, it's just real difficult, homeless, these homeless issues are difficult. I want to assure people that we track all the crime, and all the homeless people that I know are not out there assaulting people. We don't, that's not something that's happening in Diamond Bar, and if it was, they would be in jail. They wouldn't be, they would not be out on the streets assaulting people. So we do take it serious. I urge people to continue to call us when they see it. We will go out there and do what we can. We probably know the person, my special assignment deputies will most likely know the person and can talk to them. Make sure if they are suffering mental illness, you know, there are ways that we can take them into custody involuntarily for a 51-50 hold is what it's called. So if they're unable to care for themselves, or they're gravely disabled, or they're danger to others, we can put them on an involuntary hold. So one day, they could be perfectly fine, and one day, they could be suffering a mental illness where we can take them and put them in involuntary hold. So I urge people to continue to call, even if you feel like the sheriff didn't do anything the last time you called. Every time is different, and these people are going through mental crises is day by day. So continue to call, we'll continue to come out, and if there is action that we can take, I promise you, we will take that action. I think I addressed most, most of your questions.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to go around the council to see if they have any questions.
Quick question. So Captain, you mentioned that it takes five people to technically be an encampment. Is that a state law, city ordinance? How do we come up with five members?
It's the sheriff's department. It triggers the host, our host is our, is our homeless outreach team.
Oh, is it, is it department policy?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, the city staff can also address an encampment that is on public property or on private property that has a letter of agency filed with the sheriff's department. And so while the sheriff's department may have a policy that five persons trigger the host team, city staff has dealt with encampments of just one person before. As the captain said, there is a process. It's not an immediate removal. We have to go through that by law, but we have done it before on many occasions successfully. And so I will provide both members of the public that were here, my business cards, so that they have contacts in the city. that they have contacts in the city manager's office and we can do our best to assist them with their unique issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowe, do you have any question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Captain, is there anything that we can do to give you more tools in your toolbox? Can we enhance our municipal code to give you more power? I understand about the misdemeanors having to be committed in your presence. Is there a way that that can be replaced by a video of the perpetrator committing some act, not in your presence, but in the presence of the reporter? Would that help you? Or can we help you, give you more tools in your toolkit by maybe specifying or spelling out more infractions? I know they're infractions, but infractions are still nonetheless a violation of law. And you know, somebody mentioned, well, we have homeless people defecating. Well, defecating in public is a violation and as well as exhibiting certain body parts. Can we emphasize on some of these quality of life infractions to give you more authority and power, more things to work with?
So I think I did mention that defecation would be a crime that we could enforce. I just... We just didn't get any of those calls. Infractions, even misdemeanors, unfortunately, there's a push in the legislature for the county and the state to minimize the number of people in the jails. And because of that, a lot of the... Even misdemeanors, infractions 100%, but almost all misdemeanors as well, are not going to lead to someone staying in custody. The jails are full currently with violent inmates. That's who's being held there. And if it's a non-violent crime, almost in every instance, they're going to be released on a citation. So infractions, we could go out there and we could give them a ticket, but that's not going to lead to them being removed from the scene. They're going to have a ticket, it's going to go to a warrant, and then they're going to go into the system, which is kind of the opposite of trying to help them. You're just locking them into the system once again that we were trying to get out of, unfortunately. So I don't know, as I said, it's a larger solution than law enforcement. It's going to take somebody with a really big idea that involves everybody in the country to solve this crisis. But we do what we can and continue to call, please. I just want to say, don't stop calling just because you're frustrated. We, as law enforcement, are also frustrated, but we try to do what we can when we can. We get it. It's a quality of life. We're concerned about the quality of life. So continue to call and we'll continue to try to come up with ways to solve the problem.
Okay. And then a question on the knife. Isn't it like three... Is the threshold three inches or five inches?
That's for a folding knife in your pocket.
A folding knife, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Liu, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Captain. You mentioned that we have deputies that have a good rapport with individuals that are experiencing homelessness. And I read studies that building a good rapport, it is a good way to build open communication to relationships. Are we... In terms of communication, interactions, do we regularly go out there and patrol it before the calls come in, or only go out there after the call comes in?
The city of Diamond Bar funds deputies that handle the day-to-day calls. So if you call the Sheriff's Department and you say, "This is what I see," we have deputies that will go to that call for service. The special assignment deputies that Ryan spoke of earlier, they do not respond to calls. They are out there just patrolling for quality of life issues. So they are my deputies that are the... They are my proactive deputies, right? The ones answering calls are my reactive deputies. The five SAO, the five, what I call SAO, which is special assignment officers, those are my proactive deputies that are trying to stop crime before it happens. So yes, we are in constant contact. They're driving through the areas that we know that we're having problems and they're looking for these individuals and making sure that they're not committing crimes.
Thank you. Mayor Porton, time?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if this is a question for you, Captain, or for Ryan or for Dan. I don't know how many days, two weeks, three weeks ago, there was a fire on the westbound 60 off-ramp at Diamond Bar. And you didn't see it. I had to actually drive to Pomona and come down and look at it and still couldn't see it. But what... The reason I bring this up is we're talking about this process and we've got to have, you know, we have to have information put out. We have to let them know that they don't belong there. But there was a fire. And so when does the... When do the folks that live up that hill, that their homes would have burned if they hadn't taken action and the fire department got there promptly, how do we protect our homes? How do we protect our neighbors? Who wants to weigh in on that?
I hear your frustration.
I'm good.
I live in a hillside also. I live in Orange County on a hillside. I have the same concerns. You know, I don't want to get political, but voting has consequences.
Right.
And the way that we lean in the state currently, it favors the unhoused. And the issue is the jails, you know, just the jails. They consider the jails overcrowded. They're considering closing Men's Central Jail, which houses about 4,000 inmates. So there is a crisis in the jails as far as how do we house these people, even with the passage, the latest passage of the proposition that repealed Prop 47. That came with no funding. So it hasn't been that effective. The state didn't release the funding that goes with that proposition. So yes, a lot of the things in Prop 47 gave back power to the law enforcement, but then there's no way to get them in jail because it's full. And then there's no programs... There's no funding for the programs to get them off drugs and get mental health programs for them as well.
So the problem that Ms. Arias was talking about at this business area is they could be stealing from the mobile or stealing from something else. They could be... Pick something, that they're doing something shouldn't be doing in a business. So the problem is, and she's taken the effort to talk to them and say, "Hey, how can we help? What can you do? What have you seen?" And it gets to the point where the person that saw it, it could be me, right? I'm in the store, I see it. I'm not interested in being involved. The owner's standing right there. He's not interested because it's a dual problem for him. He's got to leave the store. So it's a catch-22 and nobody... I know what you're going to say. I feel your frustration.
I agree with everything you're saying. Some of the new changes are... Before, you could go into a store and you could steal objects over and over again and it was never cumulative. It didn't add up. So as long as the item you stole was under $950, you were in the clear. It was an infraction and you were released. The repeal of Prop 47 makes it where if you continue to go in that store, we can file the case based on everything you stole, no matter how many times you went in there. If you went in there 30 times, if you went in there 300 times and stole a soda, then we could arrest you for the felony section. So those are good changes, but it would take 300 reports written. So that's why it's important that you call. It's important that we do get them arrested for those charges because they do add up. You have petty theft with the priors is... It's not exactly the same as it was, but it is back. So they have to be convicted two other times and then the third time becomes a felony. So those little crimes do matter. It's just, it's difficult. That's... I am in full agreement with your frustration.
You're lost for words.
I am.
I just... I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you do and it can't be fun. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask one quick question?
Go ahead.
I get this question a lot when I either go to call for the cop or neighborhood watch programs that I attend. They're usually... It has to do response time. And I usually tell them, it depends on how you make that call. So if it's a normal service call versus an emergency, can you talk about the two different types of calls that you get and how that corresponds to response time?
Right. There's actually... We categorize it into three different categories. So you have your emergent calls, which that's something that where someone's life is in danger. That's going to be when you hear us rolling with our lights and sirens on. That's considered an emergency call. So that we expect you, even in the traffic and all the confluence project that you're having, should be five minutes or less. I believe we're at about 2.9 is our average for responding to emergency calls. If I remember off the top of my head, it's under three minutes. Our next call will be an emergent call. So an emergent call would be something where it's usually... A good example would be a husband and wife that are arguing. We can hear them arguing in the back. I mean, I'm sorry, arguing in the back. We can hear them arguing in the background as someone's calling. And there's a potential that it could rise to a more serious emergent call. So that's going to be a priority call where we expect them to get there in under 15 minutes. And I think we're... That one I'm a little more iffy about, but I'd say we're at about nine minutes, somewhere in that range for a priority call. And that's just one example, but priority call would be aggravated assault... I mean, not aggravated assault, like a husband and wife arguing. I'm drawing a blank on any of them, but not quite someone's in danger, but there's a potential for it to lead to that would be considered a priority. And then you have routine calls. So a routine call... Okay, so like the chainsaw incident, right? There's a person walking down the street carrying a chainsaw. That could be based on what the person says. That could be an emergent call or respond, lights and sirens to that, right? That sounds like something that's really about to go bad. It could be someone is walking down the street carrying a chainsaw that's not on, right? That's probably what we would consider a priority call. So you're going to go to that before you're going to go to any other call other than emergency. And then you have a routine call, which is there's a possible homeless person under the underpass at Diamond Bar Boulevard at the south end. So that's going to be a routine call. That's going to fall... Unfortunately, those fall to the bottom of the list underneath emergencies and priorities. So the threshold for that is 60 minutes, but we are sitting at about 29, I think, maybe 32 minutes for a routine call. So less than a half hour. The limit for the Sheriff's Department is one hour, but because of the cities, all three cities that I'm in, it's under... We're about 30 minutes for a routine call. So if you're calling in and it's been more than 30 minutes, give us a call. It shouldn't take more than 30 minutes. And that's going to be our slowest... That should be our slowest response. So if you're sitting there and it's, you know, you call in for a traffic collision, you're hurt, we should be there in two to three minutes. You call in for a traffic collision, you say nobody's hurt, we should be there in about 30 minutes.
We heard about the resident reporting an encampment in the Stevens Field railroad area. I've been there twice, once in the afternoon, once in the evenings. I haven't seen any. So that can it be they are in the mobile system? They just go there very late in the night? That is so that then they move away during the daytime? Can it be that? And do you usually send the patrol people there in the late night to see if there's anybody encamping there?
Yeah, we have deputies that work all 24 hours of the day. It really matters on our workload whether deputies are answering calls or whether they have free time. But when they do have free time, we encourage them to drive through the areas, deal with the quality of life issues, looking for cars that don't belong, looking for homeless encampments. It's really based on the day, how busy we are that day, how much time they have to go on the hunt for proactive things.
I can add a little bit of information related to Stevens Field and any activity there. So one of the challenges of that site is it's immediately adjacent to the Union Pacific Railroad, the city of industry. And it serves almost as a highway for those that are traveling between the city of Pomona through the city of industry and sometimes into Diamond Bar. We are out on that site pretty much on a daily basis. We have work going on right now. Our staff, in addition to the contractors, have been made aware of to watch for any situation. We see no signs of any overnight encampments on that property based on the feedback from not only our public works team, but those that are contracted to be doing some of the maintenance work on the site. What happens is that homeless individuals will travel down the, for better... Or for lack of a better word, the railway there. And they will then cut through the city of industry's fence that is immediately adjacent to the end of Sunset Crossing Road and then travel down Sunset Crossing to the Del Taco, the mobile station, and so forth. We are constantly working with the city of industry to repair the fence, clean up any encampments in the creek area that's at the end, the terminus of that street. That's where we see the encampment activity in that area. It's not so much on the site. And some of the maintenance work that we've done has remediated some attractive areas for encampments in the past.
Thank you for this additional information. And also that I think we have discussed that in the past, that the residents reported people with a chainsaw. And that people, I don't believe it belongs to the so-called homeless group, right? They have a connection. They have families in our areas. So also that we were talking about homeless, we talked about transient. I think can we get a better definition, what's considered to be homeless or transient? What do you call them transient? What do you call them? When do we call them? Called just homeless situation? Can any...
They're all the ubiquitous terms. I think the current is unhoused individuals, but all of those terms refer to the same thing, unhoused, not... They don't have a fixed housing position. Hopefully that one doesn't catch on. And Councilmember Lowe, you mentioned if there was anything you could help with. And what came to mind for me is I would say the one problem we have is state property in the city as well as the county area is when it becomes under the jurisdiction of Caltrans and CHP. That is our most difficult. So you're... I'm talking like the parking rides and the areas along the freeways. We just have a real difficult time getting Caltrans engaged to help us out in those
We just had a conversation with our state senator earlier. Maybe we should reach out to him and just kind of talk with him about that because he is our liaison to the state and see what we can do about that. I agree with you that that is... That's a really issue and that's always been a, oh, this is not your property, this is our property, a push and a deflection and all that. It's really frustrating. So maybe let's work on that. Earlier, I was thinking about when there was a Supreme Court case that cities have the power to remove homeless people and the governor made a big deal about, well, cities, aren't you doing your job? Or counties, you're not doing your job. And we want to be doing our job to make it safe, so to the extent that we can. I think we should do that. Maybe the first step is Bob... Our Senator Bob Archuleta with these state properties.
I also want to mention that I recently had a meeting. I also... We also patrol the areas of Roland Heights, which is the unincorporated area. We had a very large meeting. They brought together the cities that are under Hilda Salisa's area. And they wanted to talk about how the cities are able to deal with the homeless much better and quicker than the unincorporated areas. They feel like the transients are lingering and staying in the unincorporated areas and nothing's getting done, but the cities are able to get it done. And out of that conversation, it really came down to the speed and ability of the cities to use their public works and the resources to clean up the areas. Like if we get somebody moved out of an area, no one comes to clean up their stuff. So they go to jail, they come out and all their stuff is there when they get back. In the city of Diamond Bar, if a crime occurs, we're able to get that person in custody or 51-50 hold, whatever it is, the city is very quick. They don't throw their property away. We have to... The city unfortunately has to store that property, but it's quickly removed. And that is really the difference. And that is really the difference between living in a city area and an unincorporated area, is the speed at which we are able to move. So I want to thank the city for that and continuing to work to help law enforcement in this very difficult task.
Can we provide you with maybe drones to do, to assist your deputies with some of the patrolling? Saves time, saves manpower, saves gas?
Yeah, unfortunately, a drone program has to be overseen by our special enforcement bureau, so there's policies against individual deputies having the drones. We're trying to work through that program.
Isn't it?
Yes.
Although, one more question. Captain, you mentioned the fifty-one-fifty-one. Does that, so you have to call the, if you have something?
No, 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 no. They, the only people are physicians and law enforcement are the only people empowered, so fire department cannot do it. No other gives law enforcement the power to involuntary hold somebody.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That we're not trying to help. All we want to do is help. We're just, we're locked in with the penal code. So a crime has to be committed to involve the police department, unfortunately.
Thank you so much. And our next item, the agenda is a schedule for future events and consent calendars. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of, it's actually coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Coffee with the Cop will be held tomorrow evening, September seventeenth. We'll be meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-third, starting at six-thirty PM in the Windmill. Converter etching will be available Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, from nine to eleven AM at Calvary Chapel on Golden Springs. Also on September twenty-fifth, starting at six-thirty PM at City Hall. And there will be another coffee station on Valley Boulevard in Walnut. And our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the August nineteenth, meant for July, approval of a consultant services agreement with De novo Planning Group for the Preparatory five dash thirty-two, approving amendments to the city's home improvement program guidelines, including waiving of the formal bidding requirements and an appropriate judicial legal services, and adoption of proclamations declaring September fifteenth through October fifteenth as, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you for the report. Would any, anyone like to pull any items? We have a motion, we have a second. City Clerk Santana, can you please call for the vote? It's public hearings. There are no public hearings items on tonight's agenda. There are no council consideration items on tonight's agenda. Moving on, next session is the council. I'm going to start with Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to again thanks us and our residents quite a bit to have that information. So thank you. I think all of us were at the Maple Hill Grand Open, a brand-new park, and thank again our Senator Bob Archuleta for the big check that he presented us with last year.
Thank you, Mayor. I just congratulate and thank our staff for a great job at updating Maple Hill Park. It was really, it's really amazing. And Mr. Shi for his leadership. We just thank him for inspiring all those. Their best lives. And last week, Mayor Protam and I attended the grand opening of Cogleap Incorporated. This is to help them by working with their cognition to alleviate some of their symptoms. Thank you for joining us tonight. It was long, but hopefully everyone benefited from the information. Or care and concern for our community. We really appreciate it. Thank you, and I'll say goodnight.
Thank you.
For your care and keeping us, our city safe, and our residents came out and speak nicely goodnight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Thai?
Thank you, Mayor. I got to tell you, the highlight of re-grand opening, and some things that are particularly exciting. And the highlight, in my opinion, and staff, you did a great job. Sessi and your ribbon in the way there, and we're going to cut the ribbon, and the highlight of the whole thing is, back here, goes under that ribbon, makes his way down the steps, and he was going to be the first one to play with it. And it was safe. It was just, it was wonderful. I congratulated his mom to just, it was one of his chops, but he's gone. So anyhow, it was a terrific morning, an hour to mostly, thank you, goodnight, and God bless you.
Thank you. For this morning's event, I just want to add that, you know, that for the last couple of weeks, areas, because the parking lot was closed, so that, you know, the park doors, park their car reopening, I think the parents will be much happier because they will save a lot of time. All the parents can notice that. And also that I was very impressed that today's event was very well-attended. So we have a good chatting with them and enjoyed by the resident here, and we're. Last week, I also visited the J.C. Grove. It's a small park. That's the first time I've visited here. But, and then it turned out that the park was to be done. But I think that will be our task in the next few years, to see we can improve that park.
[inaudible][1734.13]